So Madam Clerk, will you do the roll call please?
Counselor Mackey.
President.
Counselor Gamble.
President.
Counselor Burley.
President.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Warden McQueen.
President.
Counselor Desai.
Present.
Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Columbus.
Here.
Welcome back. Counselor Keeveney.
Present.
Counselor Boddy.
Present.
Counselor O'Leary.
Present.
Counselor DeBreen.
Present.
Counselor Millen.
Present.
Counselor soever sends his regrets. Counselor Potter.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, yeah, welcome back, Counselor Columbus. I look forward to hearing from you and it's nice to see you back, so. Are there any declarations of becuse and interest with regards to our agenda for today from county councilors? All right, if one does arise, you can declare at that time, fill out the proper paperwork. We have a set of minutes from the last council and committee of the whole. Can I have a mover and a second or please? Counselor Burley, Counselor O'Leary, are there any errors or omissions in those sets of minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. I guess only one thing is with regards to the recognizing the moment of silence. I mentioned at the tear this morning, it talked about the flight, but it didn't mention about the Canadians and I just wonder if that could be added.
We'll make that.
Yeah, I think it went from 63 to 57, I think, right? Okay, can I have a mover and a second for the closed session of the committee of the whole? Counselor Keeveney, Counselor Gamble, are there any errors or omissions in those sets of minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. We have the minutes of the long-term committee of management minutes dated January 14th and there's some resolutions contained therein. Can I have a mover and a second or please? Counselor Mackey, Counselor Burley, are there any discussion on those sets of minutes? Counselor Hicks.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I did have a question. I note in the section talking about the redevelopment governance discussion that the committee was reviewing options for that, the building, perhaps having a building committee. There was something noted in the minutes that stated, it said it was noted that the committee has background in the subject matter and perhaps the planned length of the meetings can be extended to accommodate additional subject matter. What does that mean?
Through you, Mr. Warden. The question was raised at the committee of management and this is not something that needs to be decided immediately, but just trying to think through schedules and future planning about what the most appropriate way would be to handle the building project or projects once we start to move in that direction. So what the committee discussed was whether or not it would be most appropriate to set up a building committee similar to what we had when we did the renovations to the administration building or whether or not the committee wanted to function as the building committee for the project itself. I think what we heard was that there are some pros and cons to both of those directions. So I think that we likely need to, once it's confirmed, really the scope of the projects that we're working on, I think we'll be able to come back with a report and have a discussion with all of council just about the kind of time commitments and the frequency of meetings and all of the things that go into this, recognizing that if, once we do start into a project, we're talking about a number of years. Okay?
Thank you for that answer, Mr. Warden. I guess, was it the discussion at the committee level that there was some expertise in the committee already? Is that what was being referred to? Because it says the committee has background in the subject matter, I'm anticipating, I know that. Counselor Burley certainly, it's okay, certainly has expertise and then talking about the meetings could be extended. Is it talking about extending the meetings, the management committee meetings?
Through you, Mr. Warden, yes. The discussion was that members of the committee of management have, through serving on that committee, built up some expertise in the long-term care operations that might be beneficial to the project decisions as they go forward and so how was that going to work in practice? And so if we were going to do things that way, the idea was that the meetings of the committee of management would be extended to account for the additional agenda items.
Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I apologize, Counselor Hicks, I was not quite awake when you asked your question. Now I'm awake. Around the committee of management, we do have experts in various fields that really help with this construction projects that we have coming before us. We did have a very good management team when we built this addition onto this building and there's many things we need to look at as we go forward that maybe the committee of management couldn't have the time to look after everything at once. We may have to have a subcommittee to go back to the committee of management. And the main key was that the committee of management all wanted to be involved in that part of the construction part and that's basically what we're trying to do. And we still haven't had enough conversations on it yet.
Any further questions than Counselor Hicks or?
No, just a comment that, and I'm sure you're discussing this at the committee level, that I think particularly if we have two major projects on the go at the same time, you know, I think one major project is big enough, but if we, particularly if we have two major projects on the go, may really want to consider a separate and distinct body that deals with those projects, reporting back to the management committee.
Similar to the building committee that was here, there was minutes captured and then all those minutes flowed up through county council on that part. And I think Madam CEO just sort of brought it up as far as an initial discussion. Nothing has been decided at this time. We, you know, have to see how things roll out in that sense, but certainly worth, and thank you for bringing that forward. Are there any other questions or comments then for the management, for the long-term care management committee? Seeing none then, all in favor? That is carried. So at this time then, we are going to move in camera with the items that are listed on your agenda. Can I have a mover and a second for that, please? Counselor Potter, Counselor Millen, any discussion there? I guess who's all staying and who's leaving, Madam Clerk?
Randy, Michael, Jaclyn, Kim, Karen, and myself.
Okay, so all in favor of the in camera then? Carried. Okay, so we'll just give a few minutes for.
So, welcome back, and I just want to confirm that only the items stated in the resolution to move into closed session were discussed, and Madam Clerk, do you wish to expand on that at all?
No.
That's fine, okay. All right, going on to, further on to our agenda then, is reports. There's a report there that was discussed at our last County Council meeting with regards to the Warden being appointed as the ex-official member of the Board of Health. I need a motion for that, Counsel Robinson, Counsel Patterson, or sorry, Carlton. Any discussion on that? I don't know, Counsel Columbus, you weren't here, I don't know if you caught enough in the minutes from what was discussed, okay. Any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, there are no bylaws at this time. Good news and celebrations. Who would like to go first? Come on now, there's lots of good news and celebrations. I'll start off, we had, I think, a very successful Roma conference, and certainly with having a hospitality suite with regards to Gray County, I've had some raving reviews. I do have a book that everybody used to sign in on that, it's at Penny's office, if you wish to review that. It was, I think it was very well received, a good time to have an opportunity to network, and reflect, and time to relax, along with playing that odd game of euchre. So, any other good news? Counsel Potter.
Well, also from your...
That's right.
Also from Roma, we're very proud that our CAO was part of the question box panel, except that he didn't know until he saw a photograph taken from in front of the panel that he was being seen on a couple of TV screens that were about 10 times larger than life size, so that was a bit of a shock to him yesterday, but we are very proud of him for taking part in that.
Yeah, Sean did a great job. Counsel Bonney.
Thank you, Warden McQueen. As you know, you were there, great to have an announcement last Friday, funding coming for affordable housing, not-for-profit housing. The On Sound Housing Company, just to give you a bit of a background, On Sound Housing Company and the On Sound Housing Corporation Limited, there's two, and they own two different pieces of property. Goes back to at least the 50s, if not the late 40s, Mayor Eddie Sargent was looking at how to do housing, post-war. They decided to put together a not-for-profit corporation, which probably wasn't legal at the time, but it's, he just figured out how to make it work and did it. In 2018, we're at 280 units, by the time we are done, we will be at a little over 330, which is a nice increase in two or three years. The total amount announced, or re-announced, was nine point something million dollars, and this addition that was announced Friday is 6.2 million, so it's a little bit, it confirms the money that the housing corporation was hoping for. They're aiming for about 54 additional units, it will be somewhere between 54 and 60 by the time they're done, so this is great news. I know Town of Blue is looking at not-for-profit housing the same way, they've had a good look at B.C. Blackcomb Whistler, I believe, however, this is a 50-year-old model that's only 20 minutes, half an hour away from where you are, that works great, and you should have a look if you get a chance. So, some of them are market value units, so you get a mix of people that are paying some value, that helps pay the mortgage for those on the building, for those that are, need the affordable side of it. A lot of accessible units, if not all, it's not quite all, 25% I think. Pretty neat project, and really thankful for federal and provincial funding. We wouldn't be able to do it at this lower level without that funding. It gets the bill to a certain extent that we can afford the mortgage after that, and without that funding, we wouldn't be able to do it, so that's a great announcement for the area.
Yes, it was very nice to see that money come into this area. Other good news, Counsel Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and yes, definitely enjoyed Roma and appreciated your hospitality and the suite, and I just wanted to announce that tonight in Meaford is TC Energy's third public information session. That will take place at our community center, doors open at 5:30, and presentation happens at 6:00, and there will be between 20 and 30 subject matter experts there from TC Energy to answer any questions about this proposed project. If anyone is interested, please take a tour over to Meaford this evening, thank you.
And they usually have food, also. Counsel Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, three things, good things always come in threes. The mayor's levy for the Gray Highlands Mayor happened on the 11th of January, was a huge success. Tom and Joan McGee were awarded with a special award for their work with the Love Committee, which at that point had been 51 years. Second, the NVCA is having its 60th AGM tomorrow at their office, it starts at 9:00 AM, I believe, and goes on till 12:00. And the third one, this one's a little personal, and it gives me a great pride, my mom and dad are on their way to Missugg, and in about two hours, my mom will be sworn in as a brand-new Canadian citizen, and so that's a huge moment of pride for me, and I thought that was a bit of good news.[1660.13][1660.13](Applause).
Does that mean you're 100% Canadian then? Is that...[1669.13][1669.13](Laughter) Just kidding. Any other good news and celebrations? One of their duties, I performed as a Warden, was on Friday night, after the announcement here in On Sound, I rushed off to Toronto, to the Royal York, to the Marine Club Ball. Wow, what an event, that was also part of Georgian College, and geez, a head table of like 60-some people, and 1,000 people there, and everybody piped in, and it was great to hear all the recognition of the graduate students from Georgian College here in On Sound, and we are aware of the money that we help put toward for people to get recertification, certified as far as in that marine, the marine business, so it was, they showed across the country, the Coast Guard, I think there's like 121 ships, and pieces of equipment, and what they do, and I can't tell you off the top of my head, but how many lives they save from what they do, and that's all sort of funnels out of here in Georgian College, here in On Sound, and again, very well, very, very exciting time with regards to those, and it's just, it's amazing that all the recertification has to come up to On Sound here, so it just shows how connected we as Georgian College in Gray County and the rest of the country is with regards to that marine offering that they offer here at Georgian College. So, again, myself and along with Mr. Walker was in attendance, and representatives from the Georgian College, and also those students from this area, and from afar, that were there to receive their awards. Any other good news and celebrations? I'm sure there's lots out there, but at this time then, we will adjourn this meeting and take a two-minute break. Take a two-minute break and rush back.
You need a mover and securer to adjourn.
Okay, I need a motion, Counsel DeBreen, Counsel Robinson, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Two minutes!